So here we are, are we on?
Yes.
Can you hear us Brenda? Brenda?
She's muted.
She's muted, but she doesn't seem like she can hear us. Well, we need to get started. Okay, well, welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today's Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. We're in the first floor conference room in Pennsyl Hall. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance led by our attorney, John Staffstrm? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It doesn't look like Brenda can hear us.
Check with Jeff to see if he can.
Brenda, can you hear us? No? You can?
Oh, audio is good.
Okay, good. Okay, the first item. John, I'm sorry, John Cattell, it's assessed for if you can go first, he's got to leave. And so, which item?
Nine, thirteen, and fifteen. Motion to nine, thirteen, and fifteen to the front of these items.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye. John, go ahead.
Thank you. Number nine is an increase of eighty-four thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. That's based on bids that actually went out for the barge. Barnacle barge to do, we only had two bids that came in and the lower bid was short that amount. The little bit for the, for the barnacle was four hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred five dollars. Any questions?
Anything you'd like to add?
Just any of these items have been accounted for in the overall capital provided.
Any questions from the board? I can't hear you Brenda.
Are we on item nine?
Yeah.
Item nine, yes.
And what is this again, John?
This was, this, we went out for a bid for the barge, to replace the barge, they call it the barnacle.
Yep.
And we received two bids. And the lowest of them was still eighty-four thousand, we're under, funded eighty-four thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anything else Brenda, or do you want to wait a couple minutes?
Yeah, I'm just trying to go through the backup because it's out of order now and.
So the backup.
If you look at the resolution, the total is million, two hundred and sixty-two hundred. It's part of the header.
Just restating a small portion, one particular item within an recurring package from a prior year.
And it just increased by that eighty-four, five, five, five when the bids came in. So just for the public certification, John, just briefly describe what this is and does.
So this, this is a barge that's kept in the marina, that services the marina in the winter to break up the ice. It fixes a lot of the lashing to the poles for, where the boats can tie up to. It supports the fireworks, sometimes setting buoys out in the, in the water and also in the channel. So my DPW operations actually have their boat, boating license certification and do the work on it. And this is how they get around with it. The other one I think was like about thirty plus years old.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Back to the board, all in favor, say aye. Oh, public comment? Sorry, sorry, public comment? None, back to the board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, thank you for that, next one. Thirteen?
Next one's thirteen, it's an increase of two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. This is a, to a total of two million, six hundred seventy-five thousand. This involves a three-year equipment list, heavy equipment list, that some of the items came in overpriced from the bids from when we set this up about two years ago. So it's pretty much just making the gap of the funding. And in the backup, you have a capital equipment purchase which shows base two, equipment purchases. And this will, that difference will allow us to complete those three-year program.
What's left on there, John?
We have recs, or we already have received or have recs for everything except the Freightliner wheel dump truck, which is about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in FY26. We're still waiting to receive from the 2024 list, a ten-wheel dump. And from the 25 list, a six-wheel hooking lift truck. So, you know, until, I have to hold off ordering the 2026 wheel dump truck for three hundred and twenty thousand until I can get these funds appropriated.
Loretta doesn't have any extra stuff?
No comment.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Seeing none, any from the public, any comments? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor, say aye. Unanimous, so that would be, what was your last one?
That was thirteen, item fifteen is the roadway accessibility upgrades. This is the beta plan. As we know, we funded a portion of it in the operational count. We did not bond it for the last year, the difference. This is a three-year paving program that goes to beta, based on the beta roads assessment. And that total appropriation is four million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars and seven hundred and sixty-one. Thank you, Mark. We also intend on doing a reassessment, resurvey of the roads. The last one was four years old. So, come April, I plan on having another resurvey done to verify where we are. And that it's in line with what we expect.
Going out to bid or?
No, no, it's just like another following up task, with beta. Which is, you want the same people in the same grading system, because they have all our information.
That included in here, John, or is that just?
Yeah, so I'm going to take it out of that, that amount.
And I'm, I'm looking at the roadway capital improvement, so this is just paving or does it include sidewalks as well?
It includes the sidewalks that are adjacent to the roads that are being paved only. This is not for the sidewalks that are standalone locations.
And this is based on the assessment we did four years ago, correct?
Correct.
And how many roads approximately does this?
We have two hundred and seventy-five million, we have two hundred and seventy-five miles of road.
Yes, how much in this though?
In this, it, as far as how many miles of each road?
Yeah, like how much more are we getting for this? Like how many more roads?
About ten miles, ten, twenty each year, thereabouts, about thirty miles of road.
And that, and that covers the ADA too, right?
Correct.
Yep.
So that, yes, that includes that, you know, the sidewalk upgrades, the ADA corners of any road that we're paving, so that we're consistent with the requirements.
Best thing we ever did.
Yes, it is.
All right. I don't have.
Yes, Christine?
Not related, but a little bit off track. Just in our conversations about third services before today. When looking at these paving projects, do you ever, you have a crew out there, adjacent, potentially do a school? Do you ever consider if there's any sidewalk work or ADA work, anything that needs to be done on a school property? Just to kind of?
I do not get involved in the schools themselves. And we, and we have, when we're doing just sidewalks by themselves, we've been working off a bid for an outside vendor. We've got two different vendors doing it.
Let's just take, this finishes it off, that, just the plan we appropriate to the next two years?
Yeah, it's a full three-year plan. And the idea is to go to just the base, where we've been funded in the operational.
Any other questions Brenda?
No, no, thank you.
Any comments, thanks, Angeles.
So just to follow up to the question, just so you know. When, when the town does do a contract for paving roads, the contractor reaches out to us and lets us know what areas they will be in, and they offer a special pricing because they're already going to be working in the area. So we kind of contribute, try to get our projects to line up with theirs, so that's how we.
So what we do, we're working off of the state bids for paving. Tilcon is the low bidder for here. And it's, what it does is if they, as Angel said, they'll say them re-mobilizations of everything if they're right in that area.
And I know, I think just something forewarned, that I might be just asking these questions in terms of, you may not necessarily think of because understandably so, that you're focused on the town, and same thing for, but I know, you know, there were school paving projects that, there wasn't budget there, that didn't move forward. And meanwhile, the, the roads very close by the school wasn't, didn't end up being paved. So maybe just being cognizant of that as we're planning on both sides, might provide a cost savings. Thank you for that just information. Not, you know, nope, not our pressure, but just putting it out there as potential change of thinking potentially or working together.
I wonder how we work with utility companies, they're in those places, we try to be strategic.
I mean, I can send them my, my paving list, I don't have a problem with that, so he knows where I'm at. Usually put it out.
John, just note that, you know, when we started this, Christine, we prioritized all around the schools with the sidewalks and repairs, so that the walkers, you know, to schools would be the highest priority. So a lot of that work was done around the schools.
I, I mean, I definitely, and that was not a criticism at all, definitely remember that, but it might have just been.
No, not a criticism, I'm just saying, we did.
No, I'm just, just, I think that it, from the school side, I'm not sure, just potentially during budget, there were some years that I know that sidewalks, walkways, paving in the schools was separate and potentially didn't get done and got pushed to another year. So just being cognizant as we're, as we're looking at these projects, maybe with a more holistic, count-wide holistic approach.
It's good to hear though.
It sounds like it's already being done, it was really, the question was for my own information.
No, good question, because we learned that they're already, you know, working together, so that is good to know.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you very much, I appreciate very much that.
Take care, Brenda, thank you. So we're going to go back to, we're on item three A.
Just, um, kind of, just from, in our budget discussions and reporting that we're taking some of the school projects that are covered currently in their operating budget and putting them into bonding, they are not, they're listed in Agenda Item Number Eight, just in case the public is listening and curious about where it falls in the agenda.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Sure.
So we have item number three A, items three through six, our Water Pollution Control General Manager, Michelle Gores here, is, is Michelle, oh, John, you moved from there. And John Bodie's on the line. Okay, so three A, to here, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled, resolution appropriating four million dollars for the cost to replace the Center Street pump station force main, and authorizing the issuance of bonds and/or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriation. See full resolution in the backup, twenty-year, requires board of finance and our team approval. May I have a motion?
Second.
Michelle, it's yours.
Sure, thank you. So at this time, WPCA is seeking four million dollars to fund full replacement of the force main that services the Center Street pump station. And what the force main is, it's a pressurized pipeline that moves water from a lower elevation to a higher elevation. The existing force main is sixty years old. It is exactly at its end of expected life. It is also made of asbestos and concrete. So as part of this project, it being a full replacement will be removing the hazardous building materials and replacing that with a modern type of pipe construction material, which will be PVC. The PVC replacement pipe will actually have a expected longer lifespan as well. So this need was identified back in 2018 with WPCA's full evaluation of all of its pump stations. At that time, the force main was identified as being at medium to high risk of failure. And that was seven years ago now. Conditions have not improved in that time. If anything, the force main has just endured additional wear and tear due to inflow and infiltration to that piping structure. There are documented past failures of the force main. And concurrent to seeking authorization for this force mains full replacement, I am moving forward with WPCA and soliciting engineering services to develop an emergency standard operating procedure, just to ensure we have something in place in the unfortunate event that the force main is to fail. What would failure look like of this force main? We would see loss in service, we would see release of raw sewage to the ground and to the surface, including to our public roadways. The force main does pass through easements and, and private properties. So there was, it'd be a potential for contamination of private yards. It's definitely a public health and environmental risk. Again, full replacement is necessary as soon as possible. The current WPCA capital plan earmarks this project for design to initiate in fiscal year 26. The costs have been updated to twenty, twenty-five dollars. The reliability of that cost estimate is good, as long as we do not further defer on the execution of this authorization. This is actually considered to be a non-routine full replacement. Typically, we would go in with a rehabilitation of a pipeline like this. Again, this is significant wear and tear. The INI presented in this force main makes up a, a large percentage of influence and infiltration from that service area. That area does service Southport, the residential section of Southport. In part, the commercial part of Southport up towards, there's a little chunk of Boston Post Road Route One. And then the force main continues north of there to additional residential areas. So this will, replacement of this main will be actually increasing our capacity. We're seeking a fifty-fifty funding split. For, for this funding mechanism, that would be fifty percent funded through WPCA, fund balance reserves, and fifty percent through the town. Because this is increasing the capacity, identifying the INI is a significant deterrent in this part of the system and providing full, full service. We will be seeking state grants and loans through clean water funds. There is an application pending right now with Connecticut Deep to assess our eligibility to be included on the state's priorities list for such. And the WPCA did approve this project moving forward at its February nineteenth meeting. I'm happy to take any questions.
Couple, well, you're on the board, so you probably have no questions. But I, I'm curious, what, um, past failures were rectified through like patches or, you know, were there any segments that were kind of patched up?
Segments of the service area have been patched. Not only the force main, but also sewer, just non-force mains, sewer, sewer mains in, in this, yeah, yeah, in the Center Street service area.
So you have, we have easements, do you, did you need any new easements on, on the properties or?
I don't, I don't know that at this time. And so this is authorization to initiate design services. We have completed with our consultant on this project, tie-in bond preliminary design. So we haven't gotten to the point of assessing the need for easements or seeking of additional easements.
So the, the design work underway, that, we're still looking probably for this to be completed another year, eighteen months.
Yes, so design we're looking to be completed within a year.
And then the construction for something like this, along with that, I guess you don't know yet.
Not until design is complete, but this is spanning out to the year 2028 and 2029 for completion. And that's completion of constructions.
Right, so that was my question, yes.
In the fourteen points, it says on schedule, and the reference cost estimate is a five. Will you foresee, is the down, is the risk of crisis going to project like this?
Right, and so we've only completed preliminary design. It's very typical at the point of preliminary design that we're at the fifty fifty mark when it comes to the, the, the cost estimate. Once we get into the thirty percent, sixty percent design phase, we'll have more surety.
Still, two, uh, clean water act, um, funds is, is still two percent funded.
Correct.
Brenda, do you have a question?
No.
Any comments or anything, John Bodie, you want to add? Any comments from the public? None, back to the board. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Three B. Here, consider and adopt a resolution entitled the supplemental resolution relating to a resolution appropriating four million dollars for the cost to replace the Center Street pump station force main and authorizing the issuance of bonds and or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriation. Full resolution in backup twenty year requires board of finance and RTM approval. May I have a motion?
Second.
Is there anything to add to this or?
I, I don't have any additional information to add unless there's other questions.
Attorney staff, is there anything you would want to add to this?
This is when, when you are financing WPCA projects in the town and the WPCA are splitting the cost of that. So as stated before, half of this project is from WPCA reserves or other funds, but the other half is from the town funds. On the town piece of this, we always enter into a memory of understanding with the WPCA such that they agree, once the town issues the two million dollars of bonds, the WPCA will agree to pay for the debt services of that two million dollars as it comes due. So the, we've done this for all of these type of projects. What it does is authorize the first segment to execute that M L D with the WPCA as also approved.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? None, back to the board. All in favor, say aye. Unanimous? We are moving on now to what four A. To here, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled resolution appropriating four million five hundred thirty thousand dollars for the cost of the Center Street pump station replacement and upgrades and authorizing the issuance of bonds and or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriation. See full resolution in backup twenty year requires board of finance and RTM approval. May I have a motion? Second, any, this, this is the, the last one was the force main. This is the, um, station. Any comments or questions from the board? Oh, anything you would like to, yeah, why don't you present?
Give a little bit of backup information. Um, so that, at this time, WPCA is seeking four point five three million dollars in funding for full replacement of the Center Street force main. So a, a pump station, so similar to its force main. The pump station is also sixty years old. It is at the end of its expected lifespan. This was also identified in the twenty eighteen pump station evaluation that was performed for WPCA. That was seven years ago now, as mentioned previously, for the force main. Conditions at that pump station operationally have not improved since that time. If anything, there has been failures of equipment in that pump station since twenty eighteen that has caused WPCA to have um, special builds for our pumps and also for a generator that services that pump station. That pump station is unique because it is in a FEMA flood zone. So it does need to be structurally improved to meet current standards. In addition, that pump station being sixty years old, it does contain hazardous building materials. Those materials will be removed as part of the replacement project. The pumps in the pump station is undersized to service its current community. As I mentioned, the components are failing. The INI inflow and infiltration being introduced to that system over time has caused significant wear and tear that is, will be addressed through the design and the reconstruction. Our current WPCA capital plan earmarks this project to begin as part of the design phase in fiscal year twenty six. The preliminary design that had been previously authorized by this board in twenty twenty two has been completed most recently. It was completed in January of this past year. So the costs are updated to twenty twenty five dollars. The reliability of the cost estimate is good at this phase in the, in the project, which is at the phase of the completion of preliminary design. As long as the town does not further defer on the execution of this project, the lifespan of the pump station, once it is replaced, would be another fifty to sixty years. This we would consider as a non-routine replacement because it will be, the capacity will be increased as part of the replacement. We are addressing non-compliance with current FEMA standards for flood resiliency and will also be removing hazardous building materials. This pump station is part of a pending application in front of Connecticut DEP for consideration or eligibility on, to receive clean water funding and to be included on the next cycle of the priorities list for that funding. And this project was authorized by the WPCA Commission at its February nineteenth meeting. I'm happy to take any questions.
So in layman's terms, the, the pump, it pumps this material out, create force. So the force main is a different type of pipe?
It's a pressurized pipe that receives the wastewater that's being pumped from this pump station.
And, and so we just talked about why we need to replace the force main and this is going to fail at some point. Has it failed, has this pump failed in?
We have had pump failures at this, at this station and the pumps have had to be special builds to.
So do you bring in sort of?
Accelerate, right.
Any comments or questions? All sort of dire, has to get done.
And that's why we've moved this up to a fiscal year twenty six project.
I have no, any questions, Brenda?
No, I'm just, I'm really glad that the WPCA is starting to move on their projects and, you know, push, move them forward because they do have quite a few.
Yeah. I know I have many more questions, but I'll just give you a call.
Sure.
Just, just in terms of how all this works and, you know, what would happen with, if we had a total failure in the interim? I know what I was gonna ask you. I, we get comments, you know, a lot of the local residents have seen these pump stations in action. They, they say, wow, these look solid as a rock. Why are you replacing them? And we have to explain to them that they don't, like, we have to replace them, right? We can't use existing structure that are non-FEMA compliant.
So they see them from the outside. And so from the outside, you, you see a, a small house usually made of, of brick and you wonder what's on the inside. And there are moving, working components in the inside of these stations, including mechanicals and electrical components as, as well as, you know, all of those operational controls. Those are original primarily with rebuilds over time. And that, in addition to getting these buildings, these structures up to current codes, is really driving these replacements. And this one in particular is undersized to meet the current community's needs.
But is it even sort of, is there any justification, is it even legal to rebuild or to put in new mechanicals in a, even if it looks like a fortress made of stone, if it's not at the right height for FEMA compliance? Because that's the, I get emails from people saying, this is a fortress. Why are you rebuilding it?
Right, we need, yeah.
It's not up to FEMA compliance, it's not high enough.
Correct, correct, yeah, correct. And but when we do have, we do definitely have pump stations, out of our seven remaining pump stations that do need some attention from us. We do have pump stations that we're going to do rehabilitation versus full replacement, for sure.
But if they're two feet under or whatever the current FEMA requirements, we have to.
We're not gonna update electricals and mechanicals in those pump stations if they're going to be flooded out.
So that's, I think some, some residents are frustrated by that because they've lived there and they look, they think they're looking at, you know, Fort Knox and why are we doing this? And that's the reason we have to. So any comments from, anything else from the board? Any comments from the public? Yeah, I'm sorry. Comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. Four B, to here, consider and adopt a resolution entitled the supplemental resolution relating to a resolution appropriating four million five hundred thirty thousand dollars for the cost of the Center Street pump station replacement and upgrades and authorizing the issuance of bonds and or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriation. See full resolution in backup twenty year requires board of finance and RTM approval. May I have a motion?
Second.
Probably not much to say on this unless, John, you would wanna chime in again, same as the last.
Same as the last one, okay.
Any comments, questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Back to the board, all in favor, say aye. Unanimous? Beautiful, five A. This, so that, that is it for the Center Street pump stations. Okay, five A is to here, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled resolution appropriating four million two hundred seventy thousand dollars for the cost of the Mill River pump station force main. Rehabilitation, authorizing the issuance of bonds and or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriation. See full, full resolution in backup twenty year requires board of finance and RTM approval. May I have a motion?
Second.
Michelle, talk about Mill River.
Thank you. So at this time, WPCA is seeking four point seven, four point two seven million dollars in funding to remedy potential breaches in the Mill River pump station force main. This force main is forty years old. It was installed in nineteen eighty. It's a little bit different than the Center Street force main in the, in this, in the material it's constructed of. So this is a ductile iron force main. Ductile iron is expected to have a longer lifespan than the asbestos concrete pipe. So at forty years, we should still be seeing some reliability and we're not. We had a risk assessment performed of this force main, which identified seven potential places of where there's a breach, where there could be a potential breach or, or a leak in this main. So we're looking, instead of full replacement, we're looking to go in and repair these areas of potential breach. This is our highest flow force main and pump station receiving greater than, and conveying greater than one million gallons per day of untreated wastewater from a service area that's fairly large. The service area for this force main is, is in the area, the northern terminus is in the area of the Hi Ho Hotel at the place, you know, at the point of the Merritt Parkway and Black Rock Turnpike meet down to Northern Unqua Road and, 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 and Lower Bronson Road. Not addressing potential breaches in this force main could result in damage similar to not addressing the, the, the Center Street force main. This would cause release of sanitary, you know, untreated sewage to our roadways, to the ground and also to the Mill River because this force main traverses directly underneath the Mill River. It, it traverses under Mill River and then this section of the force main also traverses straight under Sturgis Road. The rehabilitation would be expected to extend the lifespan of this force main by twenty, by thirty to fifty years because ductile iron really should have a lifespan of seventy five to a hundred years. Do, really due to the damage in the force main, the risk that that would present to public health and to the environment and capacity limitations in the current force main due to those breaches and introducing flow infiltration to the system, will be able to increase capacity overall and improve that force mains and the pump station's performance. So we are seeking again a fifty fifty split in funding between the town and WPCA. This project is also pending review and consideration by Connecticut Deep for clean water funding to be included on the next priorities list for that funding. And WPCA did approve this project moving forward at its February nineteenth meeting. Happy to take any questions.
A couple of quick ones. If this were done today from scratch, would it be PVC or iron?
Likely PVC. That's the more modern material of choice. But I think that it's a good question for the design team who's assigned this project.
It's just notable that a repair is more expensive than replacing the much smaller one, the Center Street one.
I could explain that. So we actually have redundancy built in with this force main, which would be excellent. I think it was a great idea at the time that it was designed and constructed. So this, there's actually two force mains, same size, running in parallel to each other. The only challenge there is that the redundant force main had never been maintained. So that is also compromised at this time. So we're addressing two force mains here. I should have been clear on that point in the beginning. We are going to be first cleaning and relining the redundant force main and then we'll be utilizing that force main as we go in and perform the repair of the primary force main.
Great, that's good, yeah.
Thanks for asking that.
This, this has been, this has been a conversation at WPCA and actually moving it up just because of the breaches and the proximity of the Mill River was a particular concern aside from just the overall maintenance of the pipe, but just the potential environmental risk was a concern of the convention.
So the, the work that, that will be done on this is pretty sensitive, I would imagine, just ensuring that.
We're gonna be working along the banks of the Mill River for sure and it's going to trigger certain permitting requirements.
Brenda, any comments or questions?
I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong backup. I see a truck in here too, is that?
That's next.
Oh, okay. It was attached to this one, so I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Sent, did you say, did you?
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay, unanimous. Thanks very much for that. So we're on four, on five B. Here, consider and adopt a resolution title, the supplemental resolution relating to a resolution appropriating four million two hundred seventy thousand for the cost of Mill River pump station force main rehabilitation and authorizing the issuance of bonds and or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriation. See full resolution in backup twenty year requires board of finance and RTM approval. May I have a motion? Second, nothing to add? Same old, same old for why we're doing this. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor, say aye. Unanimous? Thank you. Okay. This is the, yeah, the next one is item six A. Here, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled resolution appropriating six hundred thousand dollars for the cost to purchase a flusher truck for the Water Pollution Control Authority and authorizing the issuance of bonds and or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriation. See full resolution in backup fifteen years requires board of finance and RTM approval. May I have a motion?
Second.
Michelle?
Thank you. So at this time, WPCA is seeking authorization to fund the purchase of a replacement flusher truck at the cost of six, six hundred thousand dollars in order to maintain efficient flow in the sewer mains. So our current truck is fifteen years old. It's a twenty ten model. The cost estimate has been attached to the fourteen points. This is a current quote that we've received from a supplier. The truck is used to flush blockages from our sewer mains, preventing bypasses. Bypasses could cause basement backups, release to streets and yards of raw sewage via the manholes and does create an issue of non-compliance for WPCA with its NPDS state issued permit. This is a planned routine vehicle replacement and as such, WPCA is proposing to fund this project a hundred percent from its reserves. And WPCA did authorize this project moving forward during its February nineteenth meeting. And I will leave it to John Bodie to add anything when it comes to the specific enhancements of our planned purchase of the flusher truck. If there is anything to add, John, I know that the, since twenty ten, the technology in flusher trucks has improved and they're. Um, and there are enhancements that our road crew will be able to use to make their work out there on the roads most efficient.
Absolutely. The 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 advancements make uh one person running the truck a lot more easier. Um, this is integral in taking care of two hundred and ten miles of roadways. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but you'll see that our plug line, uh, after our emergencies have gone down, we really are attacking keeping keeping the collection system flowing and and blockage free. Um, it would, it would be a a tremendous asset.
Just curious, um, is this um a truck that you use um proactively like every day or do you wait until you know of?
No, in the warm weather, in the warm weather that that thing is out there every day.
It does maintenance as well as, you know, clearing known.
One hundred percent, yep.
Any?
Yes.
There was some talk about what's gonna happen to the old truck, whether or not we would keep it, whether D P W would have a use for it, any, did the discussions go any further?
We, we haven't furthered those discussions with D P W yet, but we will.
I think what you can use with the flush. So any questions, Brenda?
No, I have none.
Um, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, passing unanimously. Six B to here consider and adopt a resolution entitled the supplemental resolution relating to a resolution appropriating six hundred thousand dollars for the cost to purchase a flusher truck for the Water Pollution Control Authority and authorizing the issuance of bonds and or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriation. See full resolution and backup fifteen year requires board of finance and our team approval, may have a motion.
Second.
Um, the split on this is also fifty.
It's a hundred percent W P C A.
That's, that's what I.
Town were to issue bonds for this seventy thousand, whatever that debt service schedule would be, the W P C A agrees to pay that.
Okay, fantastic. Um, any questions from the board or comments? Yeah, Brenda.
No questions on this item. Uh, just, um, you know, I I got an email from residents about the smell again down there. Um, and we were actually down there yesterday for a meeting and it, I know it never smells really lovely. Um, it did smell um like rotten eggs. So I don't know if you, if the town has received anything, um, I would assume.
We, we do review complaints and notifications that we haven't, we, we review those daily and then weekly as a leadership team at the W P C F. And so that hasn't been brought to our attention.
Okay.
But thank you for bringing it to my attention today. Um, again, we continue to s- to strive on a daily basis to maintain our existing odor control system. But it's known um as identified through our twenty twenty-four equipment condition assessment that our odor control system is in need of attention. It is identified in phase one of our plant improvements plan. That is part of our capital plan, so we'll be starting on that in fiscal year twenty-six. Um, what we'll be seeking is professional services to perform an odor study.
And that will happen, when will you come forward with that?
And so that's part of our, our phase one of our plant upgrades in in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, I mean, I just, I know we dealt with it. Poor John Bodie, I mean, he was, you know, dealing with a lot of it, you know, because of the break and all of the trouble and it was quite a hot button issue, but you know, obviously it continues to be an issue. Good luck.
My office is there, so.
I get it. God bless you for that too.
I mean, um, is the um storage of the sludge part of that as well?
So what we're storing is our composted material, so that would not be part of any type of noticeable change in odors emanating from the facility at this time.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it it does definitely smell, um, but not related to the flusher truck, but it it does, yeah.
Definitely did history and I saw, I don't.
But it's been like that.
Book post that I saw just over the last twenty-four hours, but I think that one time there was discussion about odor and it wasn't from the facility, but it was from um transfer station, I think.
And that's something that the odor control study will really be able to help us identify and hone into the actual source of different types of odors. So I don't wanna take the time here to discuss that, but that'll be really beneficial.
Love to hear more about that. Okay, thank you so much. Um. Still have to vote on six B, right? Or, yeah.
Yeah.
So um, any comments from the, any more comments from the board on item six B? Questions? Seeing none. Any comments from the public on six B relating to the bonding of the flusher truck? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Michelle. Thanks, John Bodie. Thank you. Um, I think we are now on item seven.
It's right below it.
Yeah, but.
Seven.
Okay, so we're gonna read this first and then take a minute. Okay, item number seven, here consider and adopt the bond resolution referred to as a resolution amending and restating a, a resolution uh entitled a resolution appropriating four million one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the cost of Roger Ludlow Middle School Turf Field Project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation to increase the appropriation and bond authorization by nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for total appropriation and bond authorization of five million and seventy-five thousand dollars. See full resolution in backup ten year requires board of finance and R T M approval, may have a motion.
Second.
Um, we have an amendment that we've been uh asked to make. Um, we should propose the amendment. I'd like to propose an amendment to change the wording to to here consider and adopt the bond resolution referred to as a resolution amending and restating a resolution entitled bond resolution appropriating four million one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the cost of Roger Ludlow Middle School Turf Field Project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation to increase the appropriation and and bond authorization by nine hundred ninety thousand dollars for total appropriation and bond authorization of five million one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. See full resolution and backup ten year requires board of finance and R T M approval. May, uh, may have a second. Any discussion on this um amendment?
No.
None. Um, any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor say aye. Aye, um unanimous. So um, this is, uh, we're going to discuss the amended resolutions. Um, Eli, would you like to take us through this?
Sure, yep. So this is uh Roger Ludlow Middle School Turf Field. It's an active project. We came in front of the board about two weeks ago just to give a heads up that we didn't run into polluted soils um at the site and uh our costs unfortunately increased due to the transportation and disposal of the uh cost of soil. So um, we've put a cost breakdown sheet in the backup. The cost of the soil removal was one point, um, one million two hundred fifteen thousand hundred dollars. Um, there was also, a geotech report was provided to the contractor after the bid. Um, so unfortunately, there was an additional eighty-five thousand dollar increase for going deeper with the light poles that are going to be installed around the field. Um, that was eighty-five thousand dollars. That's a total of one point three uh million. We had two hundred, approximately two hundred thousand dollars in uh the account. We got two change orders uh back, change order credits, uh totaling approximately two hundred thousand dollars. And that leaves us with approximately nine hundred thousand dollars short. Um, we did have to include a ten percent contingency because the project is not done. Um, and we could incur costs, so now we're draining our accounts down, so that's a total of nine hundred ninety thousand dollars. The total contaminated so, excuse me, polluted soils was fourteen thousand seven hundred tons. We did save approximately five hundred thousand dollars by selecting or using our uh on-call contractor versus the project contractor. Uh, so that's how we came up uh with this number.
Angeles is is here, but um can we just all agree that no turf field project should ever come before us without considering this possible cost?
Yes.
Or in the future, now that we know there are rules around soil that are not necessarily considered, you know, what's the right word?
Uh, contaminated versus polluted.
Versus.
Polluted.
Polluted. So these are contaminated or these are polluted. These are polluted. So we would expect under many circumstances to find polluted soil that we will have to do something with. Either build the berm on site or do something on site or take it offsite, and that is now very expensive.
Right.
Okay. Um, and I recall an estimate for a turf field at Ward of like one point five million dollars in the past. I've been told by several people like that's never gonna happen. So we need to be more realistic. Uh, and uh hopefully with your input and Angeles's input in the future, when these numbers come up, they're realistic numbers so that we can debate them, you know, um, based on, yes, go ahead.
I would be curious about just approach, I'm hesitant just to say the turf field that was proposed by the board that we haven't heard and the Roger Ludlow Middle School Turf Field. I don't know if, was there something special about in terms of, there's more excavation, I think, at that site? There were lights or is, what would be best practice, I guess, my suggestion in terms of we wanna do a, you know, a turf.
Site, yeah.
Like any turf field, is there something that we didn't do this time that we should have done?
You gotta sample the soils before you start the project, before we come to any sort of, um, you know, here's our project estimate, you gotta sample the soil.
My understanding was that the soil was sampled here.
It was sampled under the initial, uh, under the initial, uh, Julie.
Were like really bad stuff.
Correct, yeah.
Not for like not so really.
Correct, that's exactly.
You can understand that the not so really bad stuff can't just, it has to be removed.
Right, yeah.
And and it can stay on site, but unless you're willing to keep it on site in a certain type of way, it's gotta go offsite and that's expensive. That, that's the way it was explained.
Yeah, so anytime we put a shovel into the ground, we have to do some sort of soil uh sampling in the future, for sure.
It's not about this. I have a question for Mr. Papa George, just about just the Ward Turf Field. Um, just because that field, we've done some soil testing after the fill pile. Was there any soil testing done prior to the, the one point five the board had put forward for that? Okay, all right. So I think this is just some, a discussion moving forward as we continue to talk about.
I believe that one point five was like a placeholder, so I'm just, right?
Well, I, I mean.
Now, if we're gonna put a placeholder and maybe double it or triple it, that, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I mean, I think that it's important just being that there has been conversations and Parks and Rec has other turf fields on the waterfall. Just having and learning from this, um.
Yeah, lessons learned is a geotech report, um, because that's what affected the foundations for the light poles and sampling the soil.
Right.
And would you consider doing it for some of these, these locations for the Parks and Rec field and the school fields? Sooner rather than later or once you test?
I, once we go for authorization or before, excuse me, we go for authorization, just to have the right estimate, you know.
Or would we, even if it's um an idea, that we wanna do this, like can't we do this work preemptively?
Yes, you can go out.
That's what I'm kind, yes or no, like I'm just, you know, because it's taking up room.
Oxygen out of the room.
It's taking.
People want turf fields, they don't have no idea what what that means in terms of expense.
Complexity, uh, some of the, I mean, we've had some of these discussions, there are some catch twenty-two situations you might find yourself in. So we're working on figuring out newer standard, the potential costs related to it. That was a lot of what this, this particular one. If this is now something we have to worry about, um, how can we look for, you know, things, things like this and not necessarily step into in ourselves, again, kind of in a catch twenty-two on some of these projects where we may have backed into doing things in places that we, you know, we're, we're just merely and, you know, looking at whether we wanted to or not. So.
But people want turf fields in Fairfield, right? A lot of parents want turf fields. So you have to have a realistic number in front of you, even if it's within a couple million dollars, what that actually means. And for someone to think, oh, it's only one point five million dollars, that, that makes, that's a very different discussion than five million or six million or whatever. So isn't there some lessons learned here that could allow us to do like a study at some point over the next year or two as to what the obvious sites for turf fields would mean in terms of cost, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to work with that.
Like, we could work with Angeles and, I, I don't know, Angeles, if you wanna say anything now, do you wanna hold off? And um, we could talk through this.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the, the point is that we are, we are moving in that direction. We're treading cautiously and we're dealing with a bit of a moving target. But we, but we understand that based upon what has happened here, that we don't wanna find ourselves in that situation again, it's avoidable.
Okay. Yeah, because this one Eli came in very late and he was asked to come in at like the tail end of, after the problems were discovered and you helped negotiate some better prices and and come up with some better solutions. But um, now that we have, I, I don't think Angeles wasn't, you weren't involved with this. So we need now like, uh, like internal expertise that'll, that we can carry forward for every potential turf project. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, appreciating that each one is gonna be different on, on terms of location and I don't know that much about. Well, and I don't even know, there's different conversation, one, one material versus the other. I don't know how deep you have to deep if you use this material instead of that material, maybe there's not much excavation.
That is, that's true, right? You don't know how deep you're gonna have to go. That's a big part of it.
All right, sorry to take us, to, take us off track a little bit.
No, I think it's important because we get a lot of emails from the public about wanting turf fields. And, and that, that is sort of, not everyone loves turf fields, but I think everyone loves the idea of not having to cancel athletic events if it rains, so, yeah. But, but we need to know what that means.
Well, I think it's just important in the, in the con- the context of capital planning, being that there are turf fields potentially coming in the future to make sure that we have a realistic number of what they, and if they are really upwards of five million dollars a field, that's something that I think might affect their placement on the waterfall.
And it also might affect
Other things.
Recovery of some of the costs through like tournaments and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I, uh, any questions or comments, Brenda?
No.
Um, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Eli. Thank you, thank you for all your work. Thank you, Angeles, for your work. Um, item number seven, I believe that's where we are now, right? No, that was number seven. Item number eight, non-recurring capital, twenty years, requires board of finance and R T M approval. Here consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled resolution appropriating two million eight hundred seventy-one thousand eighty-three nine dollars for the cost of certain non-recurring capital projects and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. See full resolution and backup, may have a motion. Uh, second, um, who wants to take us through this?
So, we have a few different presenters um and, you know, on this schedule. So this is non-recurring, uh, usual, um, one million under individual item package. Uh, these are all slated for twenty-year debt service. So the first item will be oh, just second, that's smaller of the two fire department votes. This was uh, was on the schedule for replacement uh in this year. And um, and several Parks and Rec items related to tents, courts and playgrounds, including that direct playground. Um, and then um, we've got the item that was discussed last week, I believe, for uh, community economic development, but it's related to Operation Hope, the um property acquisition agreement that was previously approved by the Board of Selectmen. Um, and then there are the three projects um related to, you know, schools, which has previously been um planned for uh non-recurring capital, um, and then the makeover budgeting, now we're back um to the non-recurring uh, uh, schedule. And that involves an elevator and then two different. to the non-recurring schedule and that involves an elevator and then two different safety security package replacements. So the first of the presenters on this, depending on the order, would be the fire department and this would be the degree two and seven replacement. I believe that W G Roger case is gonna take this one.
W G, hi, how are you?
Should we discuss the background of what we have here with that vessel?
Background, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, two and seven is is our first rigid hull inflatable boat that we put into service in two thousand and seven. The boat's about, it's eighteen years old and hours wise, it has about three hundred hours on the on the engine. That boat is is used in our shallow draft, shallow water areas of town, mostly most effective in the Kenzie Point area and areas off of Southport Harbor where we keep it during the boating season. It's been effective in rescues of windsurfers, kayakers, a lot of the the yacht yard functions that go on in that area with the sailing schools. It's been very effective in doing that as well as our, doing an annual safety demonstration or or a safety day with the Piquat Yacht Club. That vessel is not really intended to be stored in water, it's more intended to be trailered to locations and launched, but we, when we analyze the timeframe it takes us to launch that vessel, get into the water and respond, it was taking a tremendous amount of time. The decision was made to move that vessel into the Southport Harbor area because we couldn't get to it quick enough from the South Benson Marina area where our other fireboat lives. For those who who may not be aware, the Penfield Reef is about a mile long from beach by the time it it culminates at the lighthouse, it takes quite some time to get by. Crossing that pathway anywhere on the inside of the light is a severe hazard to navigation. The jetty there is is very low, I'm sorry, very high in the water. High tide comes in and and there are certain areas that you could pass it, but you have to be judged right. Penalty for failure is not, is is pretty high. So getting around that Penfield Light from South Benson Marina into the our area of response in the on the west side of the reef is ten to fifteen minutes depending on water conditions or sea conditions. So having that vessel in Southport has been a a tremendous benefit to our operations. We would need to replace that due to its age and the limited abilities of that vessel to protect our crew while it's onboard. It is a center console, open platform boat, there is no protection from elements for our personnel nor people that that we rescue or pull in that that need our assistance. It's limited in operation to fairer weather, because of that, we would need we don exposure suits when when water temperatures start getting below sixty-eight degrees or so because of the the potential issues with with cold water immersion for for our people, hypothermia could set it very quickly. We're looking to replace that with a full cabin boat that would allow us a three sixty-five, twenty-four seven operation out of the the Southport area nearing what we have in in South Benson. Currently, we're we're asking for for a replacement value in the area of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We, that has been in the waterfall for replacement for many years at at this point in time with the projection that we know, we knew when we put that into water, we were going to have to replace it with a more suitable platform. On a scale of one to ten, the 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 value that, excuse me, the reliability that cost estimate is very high, I would, eight or nine. It's only depending on what the market trending, tariffs, materials, those things start to have impact on our future purposes. We we do need to be mindful of of current events when when we're looking at budgeting for for these items. The the new vessel that we're looking for is would be an aluminum hull vessel, much more rugged, able to withstand contact, incidental contact with areas of of a low low or shallow draft, especially around the areas of Sunken Island, which is off of the Kenzie shores. We do have vessels that wind up aground there throughout the year and that whole area in there at mean low tide is generally around two to three feet. The vessel that we're looking to to purchase has a low, I'm sorry, a shallow draft of approximately eighteen inches, so we would have very good access into those areas and be able to get to to people in distress very quickly. There are no long range costs for the for the maintenance of a replacement vessel, just a typical oil changes and regular maintenance items that that boats do need. There would be no additional demand on existing facilities as we currently have two and seven in the Southport area. That that's not gonna impact the the use of that yacht yard at all. We also, as far as my environmental concerns or anything along that way, we currently would would have a very difficult time trying to control an environmental spill in the water from a boat that either capsized or had mechanical issues, trying to bring deployment of oil absorbing boom from South Benson Marina would be a tremendous effort, we can launch right out of the yacht yard with boom and that make a containment and start to mitigate a spill that's in that area immediately. And then, and questions on that project?
This is really a rescue boat, right, and you wouldn't put out, like, were you in fires from this boat or?
No, we're we're relying on our larger boat to put out fires like that, two and seven is much more of a rapid deployment rescue vehicle where we could actually supplement our other community responders such as the police department and other jurisdictions that come together during these times.
But you already mentioned, is there a sale resale value for the old boat or?
We would maintain two and seven as on a trailer.
Being that you can call it, but you would you would just still.
Yeah, the the boat is still serviceable and we will extend its life by quite a bit by putting it on a trailer, using it in a seasonal application when necessary.
Any, yeah, go ahead.
Last boat I, and having to go past the lighthouse, I mean, I think this is just a pure safety issue for for people coming in at and out of both channels that surface our town and people who are kayakers and just.
It's too far, yeah.
Yeah. And just unfortunately, given some of the risks you had along the reef, you wanna be able to access it, I would imagine.
Yeah, the the reef, the reef has been a an active area, there's a lot of people that come to that area for fishing and they're not familiar with the 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 tidal influence on our reef which goes submerged, we unfortunately had a few cases of missing or lost persons drowned off of that reef, so being able to to get our boat onto the west side of that very quickly is very important to us and and rescue efforts.
I would add on that, that oftentimes you're operating in multiple areas as well, it becomes complex, you don't necessarily know where, so you've got many assets on each side or different sections.
Most reports we get are from shore or from other or from the boaters themselves, often they don't know their location. And somebody from shore has a very difficult time identifying, are are they on which side of the reef, they might not even be aware that there is a reef. So they just say it's it's right out in front of me.
Any questions or comments Brenda?
Um, yes. How are you Roger?
Hi.
Do we have a police boat in Southport too?
Uh, the police department should speak to where they keep their assets and you know, what their choice for that is.
Would you like to comment on that chief? You're you're at North Benson or South Benson?
I just, I I wasn't sure because I know the police have a boat too, I just didn't know if they had one or two. Do you know?
Both of ours are at South Benson Marina.
Both, both, I'm sorry chief?
Thank you chief.
All of our vessels are at South Benson Marina.
Okay. And Roger, have you specked this out, like I know you were talking about tariffs, obviously that's a concern, but are we buying this like in the United States or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's just raw materials, where they come from. The boat starts off as large sheets of aluminum and it gets cut into pieces welded together and assembled.
So it's a special order, you, it's not like one you went and looked at, you have to like order it and wait for it to get built, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Any?
I I would just, I would add that we are, we have had because of the the pricing and the concerns that we've had, we've had some discussions with the fire department and they are actively looking to see if there's anything that could be, you know, acquired sooner, we just wanna make sure that if we were to do that, we don't make a short-term decision in the other direction, because obviously this will last us a very long time, so at least you wanna get it right, but they are evaluating that because that is a concern.
Correct. Okay, yeah, go ahead, any question, any comments from the public? None, back to the board.
Are we going one by one or we doing?
Yeah, no, that, yeah.
Oh, we still have, we're gonna vote all together, right, so, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so then, so I think you're all set now, but the next and should be on is Anthony Calabrese.
Anthony's on, yeah.
Items, so we've got the Grasmere Playground for four hundred and fifty thousand, adaptive playground and then the Rugby Park Playground, replacement one hundred and fifty, and then the Veterans Park Tennis Court Rebuild, five hundred thousand, if you have any questions for Anthony.
Anthony, you wanna walk us through, please, or?
Happy to.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody, Anthony Calabrese. First project, I'm sorry, I'm just pulling it up in the back up here, is the Grasmere Adaptive Recreation Center Playground. All these should look familiar to you guys, this is definitely not the first time we've talked about all of these. But this is, I guess, is the time where we come for the money, so we are looking to swap out the playground at Grasmere, that playground there is over twenty years old, we're requesting four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to go towards replacing the current playground with a full ADA compliant all abilities type playground with the rubberized port in place surfacing and this will fit into our overall plan with the conversion of the adaptive, the Pilot House to the Adaptive Recreation Center. We're planning to work with Compen Playgrounds, which is the same company that we've done, we've used for the last several playgrounds we've done, they do great work. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just wanna make a comment, this is one of the more exciting things that I think we've been going on in this town and cannot wait for this to get done, do you, do you have a sense for the timing of how long it would to get the the company in to actually do the work, is that, are they backed up, is this?
This would likely end up be being a summer project, so I would assume by the end of the summer, we would have the playground fully installed. The lead time is the equipment, that's normally where we have to wait.
Any, any comments or questions on this item?
No, I'm very excited about it and not just micromanaging, I'm just thinking of it being solid and behaving there, if there's any recreation equipment that potentially the residents of that facility might also use, being that they're right there on Grasmere also, just something to think about. And going back to the school a little bit in terms of collaboration, not to increases or changes at all, but I know there's some adaptive rec playground at Jennings, I think, in the currently in the board of that operating budget, as as it stands right, as it stands right now. So maybe just a conversation about that, if there's something that could be, if the board decides to move forward, this company could potentially be a resource.
Oh yeah, like in terms of joint?
I mean, I don't know, just putting it out there when someone sees an overlap.
Let's not forget that, that sounds, you get both pricing on playground. You you should get, you have a driver, do you think, Anthony, would?
Yeah, well typically when we do projects, you know, in tandem, we do get better pricing, so.
Yeah, so we should work together. Other questions on on this item? Any, okay, Rugby Park Playground?
Yep, Rugby Park Playground, same type of situation, the Rugby Park Playground, that property is is a large piece of property up against the marsh, neighborhood park. The playground itself is falling apart, it is definitely become a danger at this point, well over twenty, twenty-five years old. We're requesting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace this playground, again, using Compen like we've done in the past and timing of this would also likely be in the summer, so. Any questions?
Is there, Anthony, is there any way that you have a read on how many children, like per day or use these facilities, I know it might be hard to measure, but.
Most of them, I can, I can pull those numbers, I don't have that offhand with me.
No, just kind of.
Yeah, I I can find out, for sure.
I mean, this this park is out of the way, but it it is such an adorable little park and you know, more people, I hope people know about it and.
Yeah.
Okay, Veterans Park Tennis Court Rebuild.
Yep, Veterans Park Tennis Court, there's currently two tennis courts that sit on Veterans Park. We are looking to replace those right where they are, nothing would change, footprint would stay the same, but looking to replace them with post-tension concrete tennis courts, which is what we've been replacing all our tennis courts with throughout town. Yeah, they come with a twenty-year warranty on, against cracking and a ten-year warranty for all the lining and the surfacing. Compared to the bituminous courts, which are just basically asphalt that you typically have to re-line, resurface every couple of years and have a expected life, you know, life expectancy of about ten to twelve years, which we are at for this one right now. These courts were redone in two thousand and six, so just again, these will be striped for pickleball as well, so we we did continue to to double stripe. But happy to to answer any questions for this one.
No questions from me? A dependent drop. Any, so that's, okay, is that it? For Anthony?
That's it for Anthony's items, the next is.
Thank you Anthony.
You're welcome, thank you guys.
Is Mark on?
See him on, I know that.
We just.
But this is, we went through this.
In detail, yeah.
Yeah, I think he's, I think that's, you approved the agreement.
I don't think he, yeah, he probably didn't think he needed to.
Just burn the stuff, sorry.
I'm sorry, what? Okay.
So this is the funding piece associated.
Yeah, this is Operation. So Anthony's not here, but it, we we just went through with Mark Barnhart, the Operation Hope funding, if we could get, we could pull him in if you if you want, you're you're all set, okay. What's next?
So next up is gonna be the three items from the schools, so they can speak in detail on that.
Good afternoon, everyone, as you know, there's three projects that have been talked about a lot through the board board's budget process, we were asked to move them forwards as non-recurring projects, which is why they are the Board of Education did vote and approve them to move forwards as non-recurring projects at their last minute, at last meeting. Roger, the first one is Roger Ludlow Middle School, that's a fire alarm upgrade. The building is having trouble, keep, we're having trouble keeping up and maintaining the fire alarm system mainly because it's a proprietary system. So there's only one company in ta- in the local area that can service it and to get parts in it is getting harder and harder, so we are proposing the four hundred and twenty-five thousand four oh eight to replace the fire alarm system with a non-proprietary fire alarm system that would be meet today's standards for fire operations. Any questions about turf field, about the middle school?
Feeling old, it seems like that's the new school. Feeling old. It seems like that's the new school.
It's.
And now it's like, you know, twenty-plus years old.
Yep, just, just like we did the roof on Burr. New schools are not new anymore. Uh, the second project is a Tomlinson Middle School Safety and Security Upgrade. Won't go into detail about that one. It's a two hundred and six, floor eighty-one, and it's in line with, uh, our security upgrades as we're moving through the district to, um, uh, improve safety and security in our schools. Uh, and then the last one is the Fairfield Ledlow High School Elevator Two. Uh, as we spoke about, this is the main elevator off of the cafeteria in the back of the building. It services all three floors in that building. It's the one of only two elevators that will service this top floor of the elevator. But the other one, in order to get from that lower area cafeteria area to it, you have to go outside and back inside to get to that elevator, to go up, to come around. That's why we feel this is an important elevator to move forwards with. This is a three eighty-nine, nine fifty. This number was provided by a contractor who's done multiple elevator improvements in our district. He was comfortable providing that number to us. The, his only concern is, as everyone has mentioned, tariffs and concerns about pricing. If it doesn't move along smoothly, it could end up costing higher because of steel and materials available. So that's the three projects. If there's any questions?
I just wanna, because if anyone, I think the Board of Ed's here, the discussions that we've had over the past few days was moving nine hundred and fifty thousand from the operating budget to bonding. The number is now one oh two one eight three nine, right? That's apples to apples. It's just the price went up.
The price went up on the bonding side, yes.
Okay, so.
The, the nine hundred is what was in the operating budget?
Right.
The bond, when we move forwards with the bonding, it would be the one point oh two one million.
So, so there isn't an added benefit of bonding in that we were actually getting the full?
We're able to move, uh, do a little more of the work with Tomlinson Middle.
That's good news for the Board of Ed. About some debt. This is one good thing I can have. Um, any, um, questions or comments from the?
So these are the items that were, that you pulled out of the education budget and put on the town's credit card?
Um, this is, is bonding, so it's.
But these were, these were in their operating budget, correct? As when we went through the budget, uh, my understanding was there was nine hundred thousand pulled out of their operating?
Well, I think they're all on the town's credit cards, so I'm not sure exactly what you mean.
No, I mean, were they in their operating budget?
This, this, um, is, you, if you were draw, to draw a line to what this refers to, it would be the nine fifty, I think, that we moved.
Forty-one, eight thirty-nine.
Five forty-one, eight thirty-nine, that we moved from the operating budget to bonding, the, um, it's actually, um, that, that number looks like it went up by eighty thousand dollars or so.
Right, and we're gonna pay interest on it. So, I mean, you know, typically we would keep these, uh, non-recurring in the operating.
My, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We would keep them in the operating and, listen, I get it, um, trying to reduce the overall budget even though it's been, um, it's still, um, in a deficit, but it is different, different than what we've done in the past.
I'm not sure that that would be a correct characterization. I'll let others speak to it. I believe this was on the waterfall prior to, um, like a few years ago. Um, it was, I think, because of the bonding caps that you put in place was then moved to the operating budget. But I wouldn't say it's typical to have this in because, not to have this in the operating budget, because I believe it was in the bonding schedule, was removed and is now going back, but someone else can, can correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
That's correct. So, so typical, not typical, uh, it would be more, it was typical to have this in bonding. Um, it was not typical to take it out of bonding, but I understand the rationale for that. Perfectly legitimate rationale to cap the bonding, but we're putting it back where it was prior to, to your, your administration.
These projects at one point, at one point in time were on the waterfall. Or an extended period of time. Mr. Papa George, correct?
With the exception of Tomlinson Middle School.
Of the elevator, um.
These are typically, these, these are, can be bonded and they were going to be bonded and, you know, you, you changed the way we're doing it, which is a legitimate thing to do. We're just, because of the type of year we're having, moving it back to bonded.
Any concerns? I know just some past elevator repairs have met with challenges in terms of timing. Any initial information or?
This project will start over the summer and most likely run into the start of the next school year because of materials availability and lead times on ordering the equipment.
This, it's been failing, this elevator, this?
This elevator's been failing. I was actually there two days ago on the elevator and the door opened and closed about six or seven times before it decided it wanted to close and actually move. So we've had some issues with it firsthand.
Yeah, and, um, my son, who has special needs and not really great with stairs, elevator, they don't want him to go in the elevator by himself sometimes for fear that he will, um, get stuck there. So I very much appreciate, um, you know, not moving forward with these. I know at Fairfield Woods Middle School, a few years ago, we really were having challenges with replacement parts to the point that we had students with disabilities needing to go outside, you know, during the winter to get one part of the school to the other, which I think in this town is just unacceptable. So I will be definitely supporting, um, these really safety, these safety projects.
I do have.
Yeah, wherever they fall.
Question about, we had this, um, discussion, there was a little confusion with, um, Old Town Hall. That, that, there's like a definition of what an elevator replacement is versus a upgrade, and I, it seemed like Old Town Hall, we actually were replacing the, the box, but it wasn't called a replacement because they weren't replacing through the whole chamber, you know, so is this like, this is a full replacement?
So you'll see in the backup, we, we don't call it replacement. We call it modernization. So it's a building, it's a modernization. We're not touching the, the channel, the chase way.
Okay.
We are replacing the entire car, the, uh, control box, which is in the mechanical room, the lines in between. And this one, we did carry a price on this one as well to replace the pin in the ground. Um, we've been doing that and carrying that price because there was a mandate a few years back that says as you replace them, there's a seal at the bottom that has to be replaced, and it doesn't make sense to pull the entire pin out just to replace a seal on a thirty or forty-year-old elevator. So we've been replacing this, the pins as well.
For, for, for anyone that comes along and sees this, though, it looks like a full replacement, right? They wouldn't know.
Yeah, we call it modernization because that's what the technical term is, but yes, you wouldn't know by pushing the button. The buttons on the wall outside are brand new. Everything looks new to.
And the motors are all new.
All new motors, all new safety switches, all new, everything is new.
Thank you. Anything else on this? So that is it, right? That's the full, uh, that's the full two eight seven one eight three nine, right there?
Uh, that is everything.
Okay, so. I guess now we have the time to ask if there are any additional questions from the board. And now would be the time to ask the public for any comments. Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor, say aye. Oh, unanimous. That's wonderful. Thank you so much, Angelus and Jeff.
I'm with you.
And, uh, we are now on. Um, item number nine, non-recurring capital, twenty years, requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. I'm sorry, what?
We did nine already.
You did nine? I thought it looked familiar. So, ten. Item number ten, to hear, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating nine million, six hundred thousand dollars for the cost to purchase fire apparatus and safety equipment for the fire department and authorizing the issuance of bonds and/or clean water fund obligations to finance such appropriations. See full resolution in backup, twenty-year, requires Board of Finance and RTM approval, may have a motion. Um, we would like to start with this, Chief.
So there's a few different people, uh, for this one, yeah. I'm gonna, the one thing I want to start off and then is gonna be, um, we have, we're doing this a little bit different. Uh, we've talked about this a fair amount while presenting the, the capital projects. Um, but we are asking for the ability to purchase, to put orders in, on the trucks and the equipment for four pieces of fire apparatus. So a ladder and a rescue and two, um, two engines. And normally these are taken one by one and on a more every other year type schedule, but due to the surging prices and the, um, and the diff, issues in the lead times, um, we have collapses of the one resolution. And going for the capital plan, um, at debt service management, we still spread out the delivery and payment schedules um, over the next few years, so that it, um, if it isn't, uh, as if we're gonna suddenly get four trucks at once or pay for four trucks at once. Uh, and, uh, the, one of the biggest issues is with the sort of post-COVID and inflationary environment issue with lead times and pricing that the sort of well-oiled machine that over the last few decades the fire department has honed in on, on their, um, on their, on their apparatus replacement. Um, there's sort of a big hole in sort of that, um, from a timing perspective, uh, to be able to do it. So this is a way for us to begin, um, keeping that back on the every other, um, timeline on most of their apparatus. So going to the details.
Can I just say that someone, like a few people sent me an article about what's going on in the fire equipment business, and it's just frightening.
Very disturbing.
The short, the, the difficulty in getting equipment and the backlog of up to like three years.
And the prices.
And the prices, so, yeah.
So, uh, Mr. Becker just gave the preliminaries, which was what I was going to give. So, uh, you know, basically on the, uh, price volatility and, and the build schedule lead times. So, uh, I'll, I'll give you to Deputy Chief Barry, who can answer questions if you need on the specifics of those build times. Um, because he's the project manager for the apparatus replacement. He's been on our committee for years and now, uh, trust him as Chief of Operations with our apparatus purchases.
Chief.
I'll just say a little bit, uh, uh, so that it's two engines, a, a rescue and a ladder. Uh, typically when we were buying apparatus, uh, before COVID, it was an eight to ten month build time. Uh, we're looking at up to four years now for the same apparatus. Um, and the prices, uh, for example, as the chief mentioned, uh, when we bought our, uh, an apparatus, uh, three years, two years ago, three years ago, I'm sorry, that apparatus, three hundred and sixty-five days later, had a, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar price increase. So by doing what we're trying to do here and forecasting the fact that we expect the, uh, normal price increase of one percent per quarter or four percent a year, uh, it would save the town about a million dollars, a little, little north of a million dollars if we bonded this out. So that's one of the reasons why we're doing that. Would you like me to go into the specifics of the vehicle or?
Yeah, probably. Uh, would you like the specifics or?
Sure.
I mean, I'm, I'm good, but if you want.
So I, I'll tell you a little bit about the fire department. There's five pumpers in town, one rescue, one ladder. Um, and that's how we operate. E, each truck has a function at a fire. For every truck that's a, a frontline, we try to keep two to three, some, uh, uh, backup units for when those trucks are either have to go for service, have to go for, um, repairs. Uh, for example, the, the rescue truck, a few years ago, there was a problem with the braking system, and it was out of, out of service for almost six months. So we were using the backup rescue for six months as our frontline rescue. And they're vastly different, uh, pieces of machinery. Um, it's more of an all hazards truck now. So we try to make sure that we have, when we go to any call, we can handle it what it is in, uh, so that's why we're looking to, to do that. With a four-year lead time, that's our, our issue is those trucks will be approaching thirty years old when we get to actually get these trucks. So, um, I don't know anybody who's driving a thirty-year-old car, so that's why we're.
People have the right to drive a thirty-year-old car, but not if they're saving lives in the town.
Correct, correct. These, these actually need to start and they need to be able to operate in all weather, all conditions. In the modernization of the equipment that's on them, uh, so it used to be a lot of analog equipment, now it's a lot of digital equipment. So some of that stuff needs to be updated to keep up with NFPA standards.
Yeah, just overall, I think this is part of looking at Fairfield, like people, you know, is it a town? Is it a city? What, what is it? It doesn't really matter. We've got sixty-three thousand people here. It's a pretty large geographic area. We've got more taller buildings and we can't treat our fire department. Um, you know, I get emails sometimes from people like, why, you know, why aren't you driving? You know, my car has seventy thousand miles on it, why can't you? Like, that, that, that doesn't cut it anymore if you're being responsible. People need to be able to get out in emergencies and, um, it's irresponsible. And then, 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 of course, when the car breaks down and they're not there and people die, everyone's gonna say, why weren't you there? It's more important that we do this in a responsible way, and this is the responsible.
And mileage is not a true indicator of where on the vehicle, meaning when our apparatus arrive on scene, we engage, uh, pumps and we engage hydraulic systems. You know, hydraulic systems, uh, work on hours. So when you multiply the hours of the engine, typically, uh, it's a fifty-hour multiplication. So for every mile, it's equals fifty hours of road miles for, uh, the, the harsh conditions that we operate under.
Yeah, can you, can you break out, like, um, how much is the pumper, uh, one truck?
So, uh, about two million dollars for each one, because you're gonna see these three years from now. Um, and that's a replacement of the vehicle itself, and so, so the, uh, essential equipment that's on it, like, for example, the, uh, the hose and things to that nature have to be replaced.
I'm thinking the ladder would be, the ladder truck would be the most expensive, wouldn't it?
The ladder's at three million dollars.
Three, and then the others, um, the rescue, the same as the pumper?
Uh, the rescue is at two point six million, and each pumper is at two million.
And where were these on the waterfall? I can't remember.
So the plan was developed in twenty fourteen in that budget cycle, and what's happened is because of the lengths of what it's taking us to get it, we're falling behind. And the trucks are getting closer to thirty years old, so that's what we're worried about. So that's why we're trying to project this out.
So they were slotted for, to be, um, to be funded in two thousand and fourteen?
No, no, that's when the replacement, the apparatus replacement plan was first presented before the boards, and we've been following that plan. But what happened is because of the lead times elongating in COVID, it, it slowed everything down, and we need to play a little bit of catch-up, and this will put us in the, in the right, uh, area right now.
So, I mean, it might be a question for, um, Tom, Harris, or whomever, where was it in the capital, though?
Yeah, in the, in the capital plan on line one fifteen, one eighteen, one nineteen, and one twenty-two. You currently see within there that we've played, put placeholders for FY twenty-eight for making payments on the, um, two pumpers and the rescue, although we anticipate that at least one of them will be moved out. They split them over two years ultimately to bonding. And we have the ladder, um, which is on line one twenty-two, estimated for twenty thirty. Um, we know that the ladder trucks now, tower ladders of its nature are taking roughly four years, um, to build, start to finish. Um, and so that one is the furthest out.
So that was, that was, um, scheduled to be in place in twenty twenty-eight?
Don't have that.
In, but, no, the, the ladder as an example, the tower ladder is scheduled to be in place in twenty thirty at the soonest. So it's slotted in for three million dollars within that year. Um, we've for now slotted twenty-eight for all three. Um, actually, one of the pumpers was originally slotted earlier and some of the other ones were slotted later. Um, we're waiting until the orders are actually placed and they give us exact dates to then make adjustments further on the exact capital timing. But we know that it's several years out at the soonest.
So we're, you, the town is gonna spread this out so we don't blow through our bonding caps or don't blow?
All the figures, correct. All the figures that are, that are, that are in here now, um, still stay within the bonding cap that we have planned. And we anticipate most likely, if anything, the dollars will go out further, not sooner.
Everything's gonna be ordered now.
When everything will be ordered, be able to place the orders because we'd have the authorization, whether we expend any funds. Um, simply having the appropriation allows us to begin locking in prices, um, apparatus and equipment and getting our build slot. Sometimes it's not just the dollars, it's about getting you placed in line. They'll say that the chassis is gonna be built three years from now. Get in line now, because every day you're just losing.
Two, a year and a half ago, we were at, uh, two years, and now we're at three years, so, uh, it's elongating out every time we delay. So that's, uh.
It's typically four years for, to build a ladder truck?
That's what the industry standard is right now across all manufacturers, yep.
And is it like the boats where you have to special order it and they have to make it?
Well, yeah, they're very specialized equipment. Um, so they're, they build a typical base truck and it just takes four years to build. Um, there's other, other orders in front of us, so that's what the, the slow time is.
So to, um, to Roger's point earlier, um, these, these numbers could really be, um, because of the time, amount of time. because of the time, amount of time that it takes, they could really jump because of well, inflation, obviously, but the tariffs, um, I think, you know, we, these numbers may maybe be much larger than what we're looking at.
That's why we would wanna do it now to to lock ourselves in.
Do the best we can to try.
Can you give us um, can can the board get an update after the order's actually placed of what we're actually gonna be spending?
Absolutely.
Cause this um, you know, these tariffs are a little concerning about how they're gonna, you know, impact our us and especially with large ticket items like that.
And remember, these these are twenty to thirty-year vehicles, so it's, they they last a long time, so.
Right, right. I'm just saying that, you know, the money that we're appropriating right now may not cover what it's actually gonna cost us.
Yeah, that would naturally come back, but definitely you wanna keep track of.
Yeah. So curious to see how it how it pans out, like what are the actual costs?
So in four years from now, see what they would look like then is what you're asking?
Well, don't, when we order, like, you know, for example, like you're gonna order something, right? Today I'm ordering it. So I go there and I say, I want, they say it's gonna be four years, but I say I'm paying this much.
Correct.
So is that how this works too?
So this this, we would lock the price in at that and then any price adjustment is based on the uh producer's price index, which is one of the only, these are one of the only manufacturers that do something like that. Where it's based on an actual thing where other manufacturers can just pick the number, what they say they need uh to do the increase. So this is based on the Department of Labor standards.
So once we approve this, you can go and say put my order in and then you can come back and tell us if it's the same amount or if it's.
It should be the same amount. That's what these these numbers right now were just what I got yes, uh, last week from the manufacturer. If I was gonna, we were gonna buy it right now, those are the numbers. So um, expect, he expects one percent increase per quarter, so it'd be a small increase at the moment. But the sooner you you can uh put the order in is where we lock in the price.
So we, they they hit you up with a one percent increase per quarter even after you ordered it?
No, no, that would be where we wouldn't get that. So I'm saying if if we waited, if we delayed to to purchase these vehicles.
Oh, I understand now. Thank you.
Tariffs or other items like that, so that's why we're trying.
Once we buy, we buy at that price.
Thank you.
This will go on the open um and authorized portion of the uh capital plan. So when we give our, now we're doing quarterly with the Board of Finance roughly and periodically to this board as well and ask. Um, so when we update all the existing projects, we can make a point to get current status too.
Based on the order window, it's really your planning on delivery pretty much at the end of life on or close to the end of life for most of these vehicles?
Or slightly past.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, this is so volatile right now that I'm a little bit just I totally see the benefit if you wanna lock in right now, because you you have, what if, you know, you're ordering? I guess it's just the uncertainty.
You're ordering and the and it breaks down? No, no, seriously, is that the question?
Well, I mean, I think that what if?
You're ordering and you feel useful.
Cause I feel like the price, the change, the pricing is so uncertain right now. It could potentially go lower in three years, depending on the political climate. But um, in terms of, I don't know.
I'll give an example, just 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 operationally, so um the 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 town has, moves most of the frontline apparatus goes to a secondary status. Um, so there's, if the ladder truck goes down, there's a backup ladder truck. Um, one of the things is that that most of this equipment, the more and more complex it is, the harder it is even just to keep it up. Which means your secondary equipment, even as it ages, and it's just, it's harder and harder to keep in secondary status. So it's sort of just this this chain effect. So several months ago, we had a, we had the the ladder truck was out for a repair. Um, the the main ladder truck was, what actually went down, that that was in service and wasn't gonna be back up for a few days. The last tier that we have as far as having an aerial device is that there's what they call quint truck is the energy at 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 N H one. That had an issue with with, it was a pen, which sounds small, but actually from a timing perspective, it wasn't a a a quick repair. So the town ended up with with actually with not any aerial in its border. So it relies on mutually partners in that instance and did everything they could to to get at least one of them back up soon and then continue to work. So there's there's a tier here and so the longer that um, the the primary apparatus serves as primary, doesn't go to secondary, the harder will be to maintain when it's secondary, to even be secondary. And there's these risk points that not even factor in in all these timelines, kind of put some of this equipment in sort of a you know, a a a, you know, a, eh, just a, just a, a place of where you need to stay really far ahead of the game on these things. So that that's that's where today's just just moving and yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
So um, any other comments or questions, Brenda?
No.
Seeing none, uh, okay, uh, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Um, that's good. Um, so item eleven. Here consider and adopt a bond resolution um referred to as a resolution amending and restating a resolution entitled a resolution appropriating seven million dollars for the costs associated with the emergency radio project, authorizing a grant to reimburse three million five hundred thousand dollars of such appropriation and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance the remaining portion of such appropriations. To increase the appropriation and bond authorization by three million six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, thirty-seven and forty dollars for total appropriation of ten million, six thirty-seven oh four oh and bond authorization of seven million one thirty-seven oh four oh. See full resolution in backup, uh, ten year requires Board of Finance and RTM approval, made promotion.
Okay.
Okay, who would like to take this?
I could start on this.
Yeah, thank you.
To the other entities. Evening. Um, so if we can uh kind of look back since October twenty twenty-one, we were authorized a radio project for um all of public safety uh entities for the town. Uh, the project began um with a, just about a seven million dollar price tag. Three point five million came from um Senator Blumenthal's office and the rest was bonded from the town. Um, that project has been fully implemented. It is fully functional. It has uh shown great um improvement in our commu- communications across public safety entities. Um, when we first submitted it, we were seeking to get all of town uh, all of the town's departments on it, including Board of Education. Um, Department of Public Works, Parks and Recreation, the Health Department, and the Conservation Department. Um, that was pulled back as a result of the cost of the project. So we went forward with the uh public safety part of it. And um now we're looking to push forward with the the rest of the town to get everybody interoperable on this system. Um, system that we have is a state system. We uh in improve the infrastructure, we improve the end users. And um where our previous radios, both fire and police, um, had constant failures and uh unreliability, we now have pretty much one hundred percent success on reliability and and zero failures. Um, when we talk about um emergency incidents in the towns such as large-scale storms like Hurricane Sandy and things like that, or even COVID, where we had um, a lot of interoperability with um the town department heads from an emergency management standpoint. Um, the radio communications was or or is a kind of a game changer. Um, so I'll I'll just give a little background on the the overall project. And this is a Fairfield Public Safety Infrastructure, and I'm sorry, Public Infrastructure and Safety Enhancement Project. Project aims to modernize and enhance critical infrastructure across multiple Fairfield departments, including education, Board of Education, Recreation, Public Health, Conservation, and Public Works. These upgrades will improve safety, efficiency, accessibility, and reliability while ensuring compliance with modern standards and interoperability with regional and state resources. Many of Fairfield's public communication assets, including school security system, uh waterfront facilities, public health, conservation, and public works operations are unreliable, outdated, non-existent, or in need of critical upgrades. This initiative will address these deficiencies by enhancing school security and emergency communications in the Board of Education, improving parks, waterfront, recreational spaces, and Parks and Recreation Department, strengthening public health response with better technology and emergency preparedness, tools in the Health Department, restoring critical communications in the Conservation Department, and upgrading interoperability and infrastructure for municipal maintenance equipment in the Department of Public Works. Um, the reliability of the cost estimate of three thousand three hundred forty, I'm sorry, three million three hundred forty-six thousand and forty dollars is probably a nine out of ten. And I'll only take that one uh point off due to the uh existing tariffs and um, the current questionability of that. Um additional long, long-range costs for this project would be minimal. Um, we've seen a great deal of success with the radios that we have in place at this time. The infrastructure is in place. All we have to do is, for the most part, add um end users to this to this project. Um, so the service life is, uh, in my opinion, this is kind of a ballpark figure uh for each individual department and based on usage that we know of now. I would say the um school security and communication system is probably fifteen-year service life, uh, if improved uh today. Uh, Parks and Recreation is probably twenty years. Public Health uh is probably twenty years. Conservation is twenty and Public Works is probably fifteen years as well. Um, and that's all I have. I'll open it up to any questions or if anybody else wants to add.
Yes, so, thank, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
There were others, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I I've just quick, quick statement on my part is, this is kind of um this is kind of police first responder nerdy, kind of down in the weeds kind of stuff. And it's rare for me to hear a lot about this. I've I've heard that for the police, this has been a home run. I've heard it from multiple sources. Um, and I've also heard that, like, on the other side of the coin is the ones who haven't implemented this yet. There's still gaps, which makes me nervous. And so I don't think we have, I don't feel like we have a choice. So I, you know, from a safety perspective, so that being said, I don't wanna talk too much about it. It's not my area of expertise. These are just what I hear and Chief or who who should talk about, yeah?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, go ahead, dude.
And then, and then there there's a few different, um, you know, it's in the room here and the chief identified, you know, that number of them. And if you can speak in favor and if there's questions, I can count the gaps from from a broad perspective, it it, you know, getting the public safety piece up. You know, it was was the heavy lift. As mentioned, the the backbone of everything is there now. Um, there are more public safety users are on it. Um, there are public safety and then day-to-day, you know, gaps that remain. And one of the things that's that's helpful is for um public safety agencies, I think it can't be understated, to be able to rapidly communicate with their partners that may not at first glance appear to be public safety, but there's a public safety nexus. And I think the nexus is a is a key word that we use in the public safety lane. Um, and on there, when you talk about parks, rec, there may be day-to-day functionality that would be helpful. And why not when you've now invested in essentially a seven million dollar network? Move your entire beach waterfront, et cetera, um, onto a more functional network for those users day-to-day. But the key piece there is when we take, you mentioned the reef, the lifeguards. There are medical calls, there's other activity that goes for them to be able to talk outward and for uh the responders to be able to talk inbound and to them and then function directly. A lifeguard having to, you know, run down a beach to try to say, you know, where they think they saw somebody versus nobody's even made it on scene yet and they're immediately communicating that information and relaying things back and forth. And it isn't just that one instance, uh, you know, uh, on the reef, there are so many other things that occur.
Yeah, this isn't theoretical.
Yeah, this isn't the, and and that can be, and the same goes for, you know, you, the public works piece. Um, you know, I would, I would speak to that, um, the public works, you know, eh, you know, storms, snow is a big one, but also mentioned Sandy, SaaS, other types, these these bursts that come through, the ability to communicate. Um, you know, not just out with the trucks, but the supervisors and integrate that into the E O C and virtual E O C environment and all the uh others. And and there's a number of them on there as well, but obviously the schools are on there. We don't usually go too, too deep into that. Um, but you know, making sure, we now have a network that 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 frankly works where where cell phones don't necessarily work across the entire town, down in Ravines. Police had had an example of a of a of a of a search uh earlier this year where literally you couldn't get their cell phones. You would have never been able to get the old radio network you can now. Saying could be, you know, said for many different places and all response, so.
So, you know, as as uh Mr. Becker just said, uh, he mentioned cell phones. And um, a lot of times we find when we were down with Clam Jam, the uh, the Santa Con, that you can't get a cellphone signal out because all the towers are taken by, everybody's cellphone is pinging it, you know, and they're and they're talking to each other, saying, yes, I'm here, yes, I'm here. Electronically, we, if we try to uh use our cellphone, we can't get out because uh, you know, we're not able to get out. So uh, so translate that to a lifeguard uh on the stand on Fourth of July weekend. Uh, and he or she needs help really quickly. They can, on their radio, on their handheld, they could just switch to channel two or wherever we put it. They can talk directly to a police or fire dispatcher and and we'll hear them calling in that, hey, we have, you know, a rescue in progress. We'll already start going. So things like that are are invaluable. Um, the uh, the chief also mentioned um coverage issues. When I first came here to this town, uh, I I was kind of um perplexed because I heard the the dispatcher say, okay, uh, switch to the north side. And I I asked my people here, I I came from a a different fire department. I said, what the heck does that mean? So they, uh, the dispatchers had to switch to a different transmit site, the north side, on the north side of this town. And if normally it was kept on the south side over here, so the dispatchers have to switch to a different transmitter just to be able to communicate with our fe- our people in the field. And, you know, so what happens if we've got two simultaneous things going on? And I I couldn't understand how, you know, I didn't think this was a way to run an airline. So uh fortunately, uh, this project came in and as the chief mentioned, the infrastructure's done. The towers are up, we're using our towers that that we set up uh in this project. We're also um working with the towers that are up in this system already. It's the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio System. So we're hitting on Troop G's tower if we're closer to that or if we're more in line of sight with that. We're gonna hit in Weston or Wilton or, you know, wherever else a tower just happens to get our signal. And it's going to radiate throughout the whole system. So we're leveraging the rest of the state. And if we're out on the parkway, that becomes important too, uh, because it might not hit hit the right signal, uh, you know, if if you're here. So uh, we've, we've just um, uh, uh, we just got on the system ourselves. We had, we were waiting for, there was a recall, some materials uh from the manufacturer, but now we're fully on online in our uh, our transmit, we can push the button and we know we get transmit all over and we we receive all over. So I I do thank you for that part. This next phase, so to speak, uh, will just give us more interoperability, which is, that's the watchword that we heard from nine eleven commission. Is that so many agencies on scene, on different scenes, nobody can talk to each other, so what good is, you know, the communication's not there. So uh, I I think this is gonna be a a great thing from the, for the town. And um, I think the hard work is done with the infrastructure. So it's just portable units in the hands of people who needed the school safety people, you know, the uh, the the uh, you know, the assistant superintendent or whoever's uh in in the hallway in the school. That person can get out right away, uh, you know, to our dispatcher. So thank you for your consideration.
I mean, I, like, Chief, I think I had, we had an executive session about this. I can't even remember how many years ago um, and the need for it and advocating for it then from the school side. So um, happy to see it, you know, move forward to fruition. I just one question, the users added to the system would need to be approved for system use, how many? Users in the email to Captain Paris, how many users do you perceive being added to the system?
Sure, so. The number of subscribers that we purchase doesn't necessarily add up to the number of users because we want to have have backups etcetera, but. I would estimate around three to four hundred users and that includes. Lifeguards, that includes custodians and again, as the chief mentioned, we as public safety are only as good as the ice. That extend beyond our own ice, so to have those communications directly with the custodians and got for bed a school emergency. There are the people who are gonna be firsthand, first on the scene, communicating directly with law enforcement.
So you'd be working just with the school district and appropriate departments to.
That's correct.
Decide who. Thank you.
Any. Other questions, Brenda?
No, I'm very familiar with the project.
You're all set.
I am.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor, say aye. Fantastic. Glad everyone agrees. Item twelve, here consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating. One million five hundred thousand dollars for the cost of the eight, thank you very much. Thank you chiefs.
Thank you very much.
One million five hundred thousand dollars for the cost of the H Smith Richardson Golf Course, Carl J Dickman Par Three Golf Course. H Smith Richardson Driving Range Renovations Project and authorizing the issuance of bonds. Finance such appropriation, see full resolution and backup twenty year requires Board of Finance and RTM approval, may have motions. Seconded, who will speak to this, Tom?
I'll let Tom take it if you want.
He's a golfer, that's why. Alright, alright Anthony.
Alright, Anthony Calabrese again, again, I won't get into the details of this, this presentation came before you guys. Very recently from our golf commission and the subcommittee who put this ten year plan together. But the ask is for the full one point five million dollars to fund the plan. The initial work that will be done is a bulk of that one point five million and it it about nine hundred thousand, nine hundred twenty five thousand dollars. That'll go towards replacing all the failing car path paths throughout that course. Some of the other things that'll happen over the years, bunker replacement and maintenance. Later this year, hopefully sooner than later, lightning detection, automated lightning detection systems will be placed at both courses. And a lot of tree work will be done and things of that nature, but I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
I only have one question. Why were there, we, you know, re-deep at the driving range, come on, man. Were you up there? It was like the first nice day and the place was bombed.
Yeah, our revenue is reflecting, that's good.
Yeah, unbelievable, so congrats on that. Yeah, oh, she, Christine thinks you sent back the number.
I think you could, I think there's definitely more revenue.
That that's just such a.
That there is so much opportunity up there.
I know, I know we're off topic, but like I, every day I bump into someone who says, like, it's the greatest thing ever.
I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, on this particular topic, which is not the driving range, but. I have no, I mean, we we know all about this, does anyone have any comments or questions?
Just the lightning rods, sooner rather than later.
I don't know, you ever see Caddyshack?
Yes.
The heavy stuff's not coming down for a while.
Yeah, okay. I have no questions, anyone, Brenda, any questions or comments?
No, I think it's great that we're doing this. Golf is bringing in a lot of revenue for our town and I'm excited that especially heartwarming that. Carl Dickman. This course is getting a little upgrade, which it could use. So, good stuff.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, all in favor, say aye. Alright unanimous, thank you very much Anthony. We are now on item fourteen. Here consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating six million four hundred two thousand. One hundred eighty eight dollars for the cost of a townwide facility system upgrades and authorizing the issuance of bonds. Finance such appropriations, see full resolution and backup twenty year requires Board of Finance and RTM approval, may have a motion. So who's gonna take this? This James Ryan?
Yes, James Ryan, Department of Public Works Building Maintenance Manager. Last but not least.
Is this the last one? Yeah, sorry about that.
That means I go first at the Board of Finance though, doesn't it, is that right?
Okay, yeah, you want to.
Yeah, so this is the townwide facility audit plan provided, it was like a capital expenditure plan that included a bunch of. Mechanical assets, life, safety, energy efficiency and ADA compliance. Issues to ensure like an efficient utilization of all our physical assets. There there, the purpose of this, these upgrades are to address these priority twos or phase two items on the townwide. Facility audit plan performed by Silver Petroselli in two thousand twenty one. The project will involve engaging an architect and an engineer firm through a request for proposal to design bid specs. For multiple types of upgrades needed and or replacement of mechanical assets. The bid specs would then be used to go out to bid for construction, some of the primary systems that will be included. In the priority two upgrades are heating, ventilation and air conditioning, roofing, electrical, bathroom upgrades, windows. And we're, you know, gonna try to touch all our large municipal buildings. The backup is on page one seventy one, if you wanted to look at that and have any questions. On the capital plan spreadsheet, it's reference number eighty nine, if you wanted to talk about that, but I'm open for any questions.
Well, James, some of these. That we got, which is really hard to read because it's so small, but. That's not your fault, James.
I'm looking at the same thing and then I can try, I can try to explain it.
No, but I noticed that some of the items have like costs next to them. Excuse me, like Burr and Senior Center.
Correct, those are costs in Silver Petroselli.
And but the other ones don't have really costs next to them.
Well, they all have costs.
Cause it just says no or.
Right.
I see, I see.
Perform, on the top of the page, it says perform with this program, we chose not to do some of these smaller items. In in bonding, right? Some of the smaller items are probably not worth bonding money.
Yep. Okay, so this is a lot of stuff, how long you think it's gonna take to do all this stuff?
Well, if you look at the capital plan, it's basically bonded over six years, so we're gonna phase things. As we go, obviously first start with with, you know, design phase and, you know, chip away through six years. Or so.
No, I mean, I thought that the, you know, when we commissioned this study, I thought it was really good and I'm. You know, I'm glad that we're, we're gonna start addressing these things because there's a lot of things.
Yeah, so that, Brenda, you finished in this study, this study was completed before I got here.
Yeah.
Before you got here, we basically were, when you arrived, we. Were in the middle of doing, designing phase one, priority ones.
Most, most of these things have been on the list for a couple of years.
Two thousand twenty one was the, was when we walked through with Silver Petroselli. We went and asked for money in two thousand twenty two when it was completed and then we started designing right away. We awarded something in two thousand twenty three in the middle of, and here we are.
So we're working our way through much needed capital.
Yeah, I mean, there's four phases. It originally was a ten year plan. You know, but we, you know, we didn't really consider how much time it takes to bid, to go out to bid and to design. So this way, the the phase two, a little more slow and steady.
Yeah, it's great, I'm so glad you guys did this. Finally, town hall buildings are getting some love.
Yeah, yep, town halls in here a little bit.
Yeah, where is that? Oh, I see. So what are we, we're. Stinks and. Toilet pan railings. Hey. James, how's the, how's the foundation there?
So that job, if you see it, it's listed on fourth on this list for three, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad. Five, six on this list for two hundred on the right side, I say it's completed.
Okay.
We went out to bid and are at, we're ninety five percent done.
Oh, good.
They got, they got, and you know, and Antonasi was overseeing it, instructional engineer was overseeing it. It was designed by them and they're overseeing the project as well.
Now, I'm curious. In the, in the Independence Hall and Old Town Hall sort of. Lists here, is there any, it's hard to read this, is there any funding to update? The credit union. Area?
Not at this time, we have discussions and plans.
Right.
But we have not pulled the trigger on anything yet.
You know, I'm curious, this is more for the administration than you, James, but. You know, I'm curious if we were to move probate over there, I wonder if there would be any funding available to us from the state because, you know, probate is, you know. They service, I can't remember now, three or four towns, but they're located, you know. In our building, you know, I'm wondering if there might be some kind of way to get some funding because of that.
That that's a good question, I don't know if, well, I don't know if we've looked at that, but we should definitely.
I would actually ask the opposite, being that our probate court right now seems to be meeting. The specs for what a probate court needs to be in terms of. Ability and storage and office space and copier. It has some sort of oversight of the probate.
The state actually came down and met with us when the former probate judge asked the state to come down. And ensure that any plans that we had would meet all the specs and so, I mean, we've. We've had multiple meetings with the the prior probate judge. To get to allay their fears that nothing will get done, that will not completely meet the specs. And we've also, you know, investing a lot of money and make sure that the elevator there is is top notch and and we we understand. The sensitivities there and, you know, it's just a prerequisite for any sort of move.
But that's not what we're voting on tonight, this is really.
No, I just wanted to add. Yeah, I just wanted to ask because we're doing a lot of projects.
Like, as we, right now, we're we're thinking about, you know, this as a cost, all a hundred percent cost of the town, but if there's. That's a good question, I have no idea whether we can get money for for that. I mean, what we're looking at and what our initial sketches are is actually a lot nicer than what they currently have. And I think we think they're gonna be very happy with it, so, but if there's money available, yeah, absolutely, should go for it.
And at some point, when they're, the plans are more finalized, you'd love to see them or share them as you get further along. I have a question just about. Even Operation Hope's hopeful move.
Yeah.
Some of the costs associated with that building.
With the current building or with the new building?
This operation in this backup, that's.
Nichols, are you talking about?
This is for Nichols Street.
Yes, it is, it's a town building, we we do the maintenance there, it's all, it's a big decision. On what we're gonna do with that when they move, but. You know, that's still to be determined. What do we have? What do we have planned for that, anything big?
We probably don't wanna.
No, here, on this list.
On this list, yeah.
Um, you know, replacing flooring, plaster, gypsum, you know, ADA door hardware. If we were to reuse, that that might be, you know, something to discuss, if we're reusing this, repurposing that building, we should be doing these items.
I mean, I would just do you and the administration in terms of being that this is gonna be done over a few years, it sounds like, in terms of prioritizing that. Have a better.
So are you saying don't spend money on stuff that you may rip up?
That's, that's what I'm trying to.
That's a good point, absolutely.
What I'm trying to say, but I'm assuming that you guys know that.
I I I think we do, but there, right now, there is different ideas for this space and they all involve. Public safety, so, but just what iteration of of that, we're not quite sure yet.
Well, and appreciate that we're also, you know, this has to happen in order for that to happen and that there's a couple of moving parts all at the same time.
Yeah, it's a, it's a ways off.
Yeah, so just.
Any other questions?
Alright, well fantastic, any comments from the public? David and I both need to. Back to the board, all in favor, say say aye. Aye, unanimous, wonderful, folks, you do a turn.
Right here.
All in favor, say aye. Alright, we are adjourned, thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Take care.